We'll officially call this meeting to order. This is the July 11th, 2018 Borg session of the Town Board, and we'll call it to order at 7:02 PM. We'll let the ministry reflect that the entire board is here. We have a number of members of staff, and we've got a very distinguished audience that have joined us this evening, that we'll have an opportunity to hear more from some of them, more from as we move along. Couple of housekeeping items, and then we'll get into our first matter. You have the June 27th, 2018 minutes before you. Would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move.
You moved and seconded. Any discussion? See no discussion. Goes in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter carries. The monthly reports, we have all of the monthly reports in except for two, and I'm sure they'll both be in by the end of this week, consistent with what our requirements are, and we'll make sure that those get forwarded off to the board. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have one guest, and at this time, I'd like to recognize the YMCA roadway dedication, and would invite those members of that team that would like to join us at the table, to please do so, not required or mandatory.
I noticed nobody was getting up with me.
I'm guessing there's a couple of you that may be adding some input to that, and as you're getting yourselves set, I'll ask Mr. Valentine to just add a few more words to this item, to kind of refresh the board, and then we'll move on from there.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As the board is aware, this ties in with the home leasing application that's pending before the planning board. We've, or I've brought in this conversation before the board, to kind of set it up in the past, taking back some information from that, and then Peter Vars, BME, Home Leasing and YMCA, their teams here tonight to kind of come back with some information that the board had requested, looking at closing some intersection locations, what the impacts are, the existing easement that's in place that we negotiated as part of the original agreement over the road, and then some of the logistics regarding the potential dedication of the road.
Okay.
So I'd say with that start-up, I think I'll turn it over to Peter to kind of run through his piece, and then I asked out some additional material that they have provided with some response comments, so let's get this as well as.
Thank you, Mark.
Peter, floor is yours.
Yes, so good evening for those of you that don't know me. I'm Peter Vars with BME Associates, and I've got people both from the YMCA and home leasing, if they'd like to introduce themselves.
No, certainly not.
Kevin's a factor for YMCA.
I'm Brett Carwood from home leasing.
So as Mark laid out, what we are here for is, because where we are in the process is, I think you're hopefully all familiar with, with what we think's the exciting plan that home leasing has for the Wickham property just north of the YMCA. And back in the spring, we did go through the sketch plan review process with the planning board, and we currently have an application before the planning board for final site plan approval. Our public hearing's actually scheduled for tomorrow evening. And one of the key components of that is the roadway, as it relates to the existing roadway that serves the YMCA, that you hopefully are all familiar with, with the signalized entrance onto Route 250. That roadway is being incorporated as part of the development project, which is now being called Pembfield Square. So I'll refer, when I say that a few times this evening, that is, I'm talking about the proposed development. So going back to the winter, home leasing and the YMCA have been, have had several discussions about how to incorporate that roadway into the proposed project plan, while also maintaining the YMCA's operations on their property. And then the third component of it, which is very important also, is how does this roadway fit in with the town's MUD, the Mixed Use Development District? The YMCA and the Wickham property kind of form the southern boundary of what we've always been referring to as the southwest quadrant of the MUD district. So as part of these discussions, there is the intent or the desire to dedicate that road at this time. It's currently a private road, owned and maintained by the YMCA. But we feel the time, as a result of this project, the time is prudent to consider dedicating this road to it becoming a public street, a town street. And as part of the layout, is also a public street that goes along the west property line here, basically forming an L, so that a public street can eventually continue to the north, basically beginning the southern leg of the mixed-use development that has been envisioned for this southwest quadrant. So, and some of our initial discussions with town staff, with the planning board, there's been some questions raised about, okay, well, how do you dedicate, you know, what are, about getting the road dedicated? We did provide to you a letter back on the 29th of June, I believe that's the documents, Mark referenced to you, where we kind of outlined a handful of items, of things we are aware of, that we believe are going to be necessary to be done by the applicant for road dedication, but also addressing the YMCA's continued use of the roadway, and then the future potential use of the roadway for future development to the north. And ultimately, we, I think we all hope that this roadway ultimately gets to Atlantic Avenue, again meeting one of the key goals of the MUD. So this evening, what we wanted to do was kind of walk through a few items based on feedback we've received somewhat, some formally from the PRC planning board, but also somewhat informally, because I believe this item has maybe, has been informally discussed by some members of the Town Board. So we just wanted to walk through this a little bit. First of all, the road itself, by design, was to be constructed to meet town standards as it relates to pavement thickness and road width. We acknowledge as standard dedication process with the town, the applicant has a responsibility to verify that all of that's been done. We would work with the town superintendent of highways to do that, to be sure that it does meet your standards. But there's a few things we want to talk about as it relates to the roadway today, some of the concerns. First of all, when this roadway was designed, planned, back during the YMCA's days, 12, 14 years ago, when they were doing the site plan and special use permit, it was envisioned that this could become a public street. There's references in the record about that, because at the time, I think the town was starting to think about the mixed-use district in here. And the point is, is that's part of the reason it was designed the way it was. The YMCA spent the money to build it to town standards. It was, it was constructed at the larger width that it was, because part of it was, is obviously, it's the number of curb cuts that the YMCA have on the street. And that's actually one of the primary reasons of the road width. It is, so it does, because typically, a town standard roadway is anywhere from 20 to 24 feet wide. This pavement is 30 feet wide, and it is done so it can allow efficient and safe movement of not only cars that are moving east, west along the roadway, but cars that are entering and exiting into the curb cuts to enter to the YMCA's property. As part of that process, the YMCA did grant an easement to the town of Pembfield to allow public access, public use. But there were some provisions in that easement that allowed the YMCA to maintain their curb cuts, and the fact that the easement even goes on to say that it doesn't necessarily allow others to restrict access. That was very important to the YMCA, and if there's any, you know, further detailed questions on that, I'm sure Kevin or Mike could answer that. But the other part about the planning of this too, as it relates to dedication, is that roadway is located in a specific location for a specific reason, and that is to create ultimately a four-way intersection with the parcel on the east side of Route 250. That was somewhat dictated during the planning process, located for that purpose. It's even envisioned, if you go into the MUD plans and manuals, it identifies that road coming out there. YMCA ultimately paid the money to signalize the intersection, and they currently do pay an annual maintenance fee to the New York State DOT as a private signal. So the point, what I'm trying to make in all of this, is that this was something that was thought of 12, 14 years ago. So this isn't, you know, just a whim of, let's dedicate the road. I think the town saw this as a good thing and potential thing happening, and the YMCA acknowledged it as part of their designing construction, and we're utilizing Pembfield Square as really being the catalyst to really take that next step forward. Because I think you could say prior to that, was there really a need to dedicate the road? Because, well, the Wickham Farms operation obviously generated its amount of business, but really, it was a YMCA road. But now, with what is proposed with Pembfield Square, and what we really believe with the fact of the layout and construction, it really, we do think could kickstart the expansion of the MUD as hoped for and desired by a lot of people, further north. So dedicating the road is an important part of that. But talking about the curb cut issue, there are a few things we want to share with you. We did, we have spent a lot of time looking at this, working with the YMCA, going back into January or February of this year. It was one of the first things we looked at, and just share with you a few things in that is, you know, we looked at various options of how do we convert this to a public street, manage access to it not only from the Pembfield Square project, but from one of the YMCA projects. One of the very first things we looked at, and it ended up being a non-starter, the term we use with the YMCA, we looked at closing the curb cuts to the number that it matched the Pembfield Square development, basically creating maybe three or four four-ways. But, and, but the problem you have with that is, once you start closing the curb cuts on the YMCA property, you start losing parking spaces because of the fact you create, if you create dead-end bays per se, that no longer have a way out, you've got to give up parking spaces so you can facilitate turnarounds. But one of the first things we looked at, said, okay, let's look at an interior circulation drive, just, you know, along this area here, kind of what you would, but if we did that, we actually shared this plan with staff back in the initial planning, it lost 80 parking spaces. That's how many we would lose on the YMCA property to kind of put an interior circulation drive in there and close the curb cuts to the existing road. That's a non-starter, as I said, for the YMCA, because currently, they pretty much use all of their parking during peak times on several occasions a week, and Kevin can obviously verify that. So parking is very concerned to them. In addition to that, they also need to manage access to the property. I think you are familiar, they've got several different activities occurring there. Not only do they have the main facility, they have the U of R facility, they have their outdoor activity areas, they have their summer day camp. These are all traffic patterns and circulation patterns that have been established, but also, more importantly, they're traffic patterns that are able to be separated from each other, and that actually helps from a standpoint of spreading the internal traffic out. We don't have everybody that may be going to the U of R, the day camps, competing with people that are trying to drop off people at the front door, all these things. Spreading this traffic out is actually a very good approach to this, and the YMCA's done an excellent job of managing that. And that was one of the things we had the benefit of. This wasn't a situation of looking at this from a planning standpoint of, how do we think this is going to work? We know how it works. The YMCA is able to bring to us 12 years of operational experience out there, of how their parking area is working, how, what their members are looking for, the complaints they receive from their members. That's actually one of the things we're going to be able to address, because one of the complaints they received during the winter is the grade of the approach of the road up to 250 here. The grade during the winter does create some issues for them. Our plan calls for us to flatten that grade out. We're going to reconstruct that and get it at a flat or a grade, because that was one of the things the YMCA came to us with, said if you could address that, that would be wonderful. So what we've brought before you is, so we've got, we had to come up with a plan that balanced all these issues of maintaining the YMCA's parking as much as possible, trying to maintain their current circulation patterns, keeping the different users separated, but also respecting concerns we had heard from the town and staff of the number of curb cuts, and is there any possibility or consideration to reduce those? Because to be honest with you, the sketch plan application we submitted to the planning board proposed no changes. It was status quo. The current plan we've brought before you shows us proposing to close three of them. One of them is at the eastern end, and that's permanent, and that is done, all so that we can completely reconstruct that entrance to flatten the slope out. Then we are proposing two other closures down here and down here. This results in a known net loss of parking for the YMCA, because we are able to reconfigure some spaces internally. But by doing this, we do think we also are taking advantage of some existing features out there that we think are help with the managing of traffic here. First of all, hopefully you've been out there. The good thing about them being there 12, 14 years, we have an excellent development of a tree canopy happening. Those trees they planted are healthy, they're growing, they're flourishing. I recommend you take a stop and look. It is starting to frame that street, it is starting to create that canopy. That in and of itself calms traffic. It's actually becoming a really nice setting in that regards. That combined with the road width, as we've already mentioned, helps manage traffic in and out. So we've actually got some good features in there through the pre-planning or the existing construction that we feel very comfortable with, is managing safety there. The applicant, when I say the applicant, we're talking home leasing, they've also committed and had some initial discussions with staff at the PRC meeting, that we will introduce some additional traffic calming measures. Definitely at least one more set of interim stop signs. They're thinking maybe in this area here, where we create a stop sign or, and designated pedestrian crosswalks, because part of the planning of this project is, is this is a main pedestrian corridor, and a lot of the discussions we've had and the synergy that's building between home leasing and the YMCA, is allowing these residents to freely and easily and safely walk from the facility here to the YMCA. So that would get built into the design too, and we'd work with the planning board on that. But that in and of itself creates some traffic calming. Just some other logistics we acknowledged in our letter, home leasing and the YMCA would enter into a necessary snowplow agreement with the town of Pembfield, of the fact that they have private properties that they're plowing, and as they acknowledge, they understand that, you know, if that becomes a town street, it may not get plowed as often as it currently is, that depending on storms and weather, the town has a priority to keeping the main roads open. And they understand that, they acknowledge that, they've acknowledged that to staff, and that would be addressed in any agreement. One of the other things we did coming out of the sketch plan is, we removed the on-street parking on this street that was originally proposed, and again, that was also to prohibit any potential, or, you know, eliminate potential conflicts that you would have if you had cars parking on that road with cars that were trying to enter in and out of the YMCA or the Pembfield Square development. So we felt that that was the right move to do, and we would work with the highway superintendent, highway department, on posting it as necessary. Last two items is, we would stripe the road appropriately for two-way traffic to designate the lanes, designate the travel lanes. Again, currently, the YMCA has their areas all striped with stop bars and whatnot. But the last thing we would offer that home leasing and the YMCA have talked about and have agreed with, is they are more than willing to monitor this situation, once it is developed, monitor it in conjunction with town staff, and if necessary, they'd be, you know, willing to consider any modifications. That is something that they are willing to do. Probably the last thing I would add before I would ask Brett, or Kevin, or Nelson, if anything, is, one of the questions we get is, well, could you close more curb cuts and just find someplace else to park, you know, to add the spaces you lose somewhere else? And I use this as my segue, because you may or may not remember, but, you know, the YMCA is part of their special permit process several years ago, they did share with the town on file that, of their ultimate full development plan of their campus. And the point is, is basically, all the remaining lands are pretty much identified for what their ultimate goal is for this campus. Because that is one of the things we looked at when we were looking at alternatives, is, you know, is there another area where we can create a parking field, so to speak, that would allow us some more flexibility up in this front? And it just really doesn't work out that well for the YMCA with the operations that are currently running there, and how they get people in and out, and then ultimately, how they see their property developing and providing access and circulation to those areas too. So that's, I'm not going to say a brief overview, but the point is, is I'm trying to represent, we have spent a lot of time thinking about this, you know, six, seven months working with the YMCA, bouncing ideas off staff, to the point where we do feel we have a very valid plan that we think can address some of the concerns, but also meet the needs of this road, serving both home leasing's project and the current YMCA.
The only thing I might add is, this is really a partnership among municipal senior living, home leasing, the Y, the town of Pembfield, and we have had many, many meetings, and listened to everybody's input, and it's been where we are today, is we're all working together.
So the only thing I would say is, is, you know, as we even, I don't think anyone could envision, you know, 15 years ago, when the Y first started, hey, we're going to build this Y in this farmer's field, what it would become, and it's, you know, spread from the Hamlet district, now the mixed-use district, and what it's going to. It's a nice part of that development, and the Y wants to make sure that we're part of that and helping the town grow. So we think the dedication of this road just further enhances that mixed-use district as it runs from Atlantic, really all the way down to the YMCA and one property beyond that. It just keeps that continuity going from there.
All right. I'll ask Mr. Costello, or excuse me, Mr. Valentine, apologize. Mr. Valentine, any additional, I get two of you guys mixed up. I would ask, I would ask anything additional from a staff standpoint or from a PRC standpoint that has not been added to the record, that you believe would be appropriate for the record?
Yeah, as Peter shared, it has been kind of a back and forth. Obviously, I don't think there is an optimal situation for everybody. It's existing conditions, an existing road, so we've offered our comments, you know, expressed the board's comments, you know, and tried to, you know, work back and forth with them to come up with, you know, hopefully a compromise. Obviously, it's not our optimal standard, but as, you know, we've talked to the board before, you know, mixed use is going to be different. It is going to have on-street parking, it's going to have some other elements to it that's going to be a little bit different than what our standard, you know, normal subdivision street is. So it's, you know, it's kind of intended from the beginning to be different. That's all intended for mixed use. It's kind of out of the norm for our normal R120, single-family residential homes. It's going to be more of an urban setting, is what the intent of it is. So it has been a back and forth with them. They've been in several times to PRC, offline conversations, so we've kind of gone, you know, back and forth with them quite often, and then obviously, you know, had conversations with the board, and then wanted to bring them in to, you know, share their own thoughts and comments, and the reasoning why they've come up with what they're proposing.
Okay, all right.
We did look at alternative parking locations on the site, based on their overall development plan that was preliminarily approved by the planning board years ago. The only area right now that they could possibly put parking is in their soccer field, which is their one soccer field on the south side of their building, and even that is so remote of any door that you probably would want to walk, walk from that point to the doorway in the back, on the front. So there really is no reasonable location to install additional parking to compensate what they might lose for the parking if they would take away, if they had to lose 80 or less spaces.
Okay. Or?
Okay, so there's closures, there's some closures. So what's going to be the direction for the cars that are there? I mean, they have to, they're going to be directed to go, the ones that normally would, they're not going to be there anymore to get out, so they have to get out a different direction.
So the one, so as we went through that, the one, the closures, besides the one up at top, which helps with the, with the slope, you might have gotten stuck sometime in the winter, it goes there. The two down there were actually the smaller, what we called aisleways, is that even if someone did turn into that, it would only be about three or four cars that they would see it that come out. So that was sort of the reasoning why we picked those, and also access to the U of R space, as to how that circulation goes with the U of R, where their drop-off is and where their, where their exit is. So that, that's sort of what we did. If we moved any further down, we would then start, there'd be, you know, could be 20 parking spaces that, you know, someone would go down before they'd say, hey, there's not a parking space at the end, then they'd have to figure out how to turn around and get back. So that's why those were the two ones that we get into.
Well, you know, as a regular user of Y, I think, my biggest concern I see as I leave onto that road, is the people that are coming from beyond me, they're, there's people that drive fairly fast down that road, you know, and, I don't, they're beyond us if we want to put speed homes, I guess if we dedicated it. But, you know, I like the, I like the idea about having the pedestrian walkway to the home leasing, maybe have a nice big light there that says that's a pedestrian crossing, you know, one of those or something. There's got to be a way to slow down traffic. I don't know, because sometimes I'll be, I'll itch out, you know? There'll be people just racing, from way back. I get concerned with what's going to happen on home leasing, and you've got the people to Y, you know, you don't want to have, that's the biggest part of, well, our concerns were about the closures, that possibly if you could do more closures, was safety and, and our seagulls, as town takes on a dedicated road, because then we'd be responsible for much of it.
Peter, didn't, didn't I hear you say, you have a stop sign in the middle by that crosswalk?
Yeah, that's our thought in this area here, is, and, and not just a striped crosswalk and stop signs. I mean, our thoughts are, and obviously, we'd have to work it out, is that it would be very, something very identifiable, to say, I'm going to use the term, like a village type thing, some of the stuff you see, like in the Village of Fairport, for instance, just where it's a different, possibly even a different material, but it's a different texture, that people know that, because one of the things, I mean, stop signs are good, but they have to be used sparingly. You know, if you put one everywhere, alls people do is accelerate, roll, they start to really ignore them. So I think the key is, is not necessarily get as many as you can, but plan them correctly, but make sure, I'm going to use the term that they're substantial, in the fact that the people know, I've got to stop here.
It's ridiculous. Right.
Yes, exactly.
Linda, I'm sorry, I jumped right into your conversation.
No, no, that's right there in what I'm talking about.
But another thing I think helps with your concern about traffic calming, is the fact that there are uses with the Wickham Farms now, but we're going to have much more formal uses, formal intersections, formal entrances and exits. So people coming in and out now have to be much more aware of traffic coming in many different directions, and that should calm people.
Yeah, and that's actually an excellent point, Brett, you know, it's worked okay for now with there, and with the seasonal popularity of Wickham, with the YMCA, you know, thank goodness, it's worked well.
We wanted to sell a lot of ice cubes in the summer, and it comes us through the winter.
But the point is, I'm trying to make, is with the development of Pembfield Square, it's just what Brett said, we'll actually have very distinct identified points of access, but more importantly, we'll have parking on-site too, that will fill the needs of not only the residents, but visitor staff. And we have our own parking demand study we're providing to the planning board that shows even for the non-residential space, we've allocated appropriate parking on the north side of that road for the residents, so.
No, I think, you know, the people that move in over there, they'll be good. It's the ones that have been at the Y for the past 14 years that are used to a certain way of getting in and out, we've got to educate them, because they're the ones that possibly would be problematic, not the ones moving in because they haven't had any experience, right? And you don't want to have collisions, or people not realizing there's some people that want to walk across the streets, the U of R medicine or the Y. You've got to be very cognizant of that. That's why I like the idea about the pedestrians now.
I just have a couple quick comments. Kevin, I'm glad that you mentioned the slope at the entrance or the exit there of the road and Route 250, because I have seen people spinning.
I've pushed more than my share of people.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've all experienced that, and Peter, if, I don't ask you to, I don't want you to get into an engineering, whatever, but how exactly are you going to try to level that out?
Oh, sure.
Because it is pretty steep.
It is. All right, try to not be an engineer. Okay.
Good luck.
Basically, this grade's about 7% today. We believe we're going to be able to get it to 4%. So, and how, what the key to that is, is closing this curb cut that's there today. So, because then what we're able to do, we're able to lengthen the approach without having, because anywhere you have a curb cut, it's got to be somewhat flat to allow cars in and out. We're actually going to raise this grade and cars in and out. We're actually going to raise this grade and tie in here. That's the ability if the staff would be.
You're stretching it.
Thank you. There. That's what I got to learn.
Rubber band.
Thank you.
It's a good way to show.
But that, that's how we're able to achieve it.
And then, Peter, you also mentioned something that I was thinking about, too, and that's with plowing of this road. You know, I mean, here you've got two facilities that, you know, that have people coming into them all times of the day, the YMCA more than maybe the proposed site. But, you know, with that being said, you know, there are priorities that the town crews have to stick to on the roads. And so something needs to be worked out, an agreement needs to be made between the town home properties, if this plan goes through, and the YMCA so that people aren't screaming because, you know, the road was plowed by the town crews four hours ago and.
Early morning.
Yeah, it's just sitting there unattended. So we've talked to home leasing about, we've had the same contractor for the last number of years that does our plowing, and we talked about sharing, about sharing that contractor. So they're hitting it just as much as we would, so.
We have a similar agreement right now with Baytown Plaza on Brant Point Drive. Similarly, we have the dedication of Brant Point Drive, but knowing it's also the entrance to the plaza into Walmart and to the plaza, they may want to more often maintain it at a higher standard. So we have a similar agreement, we have a standard template, we've shared it with decor, we've worked before, but just to kind of refresh his memory for this, have something similar, that they would have the right to go out and plow that, maintain it to a higher standard if they wanted to, if it exceeded, you know, our normal plow routes or anything else.
But that's only one curb road, correct?
No, this access road.
No, I'm talking Brant Point.
The whole road.
The road.
Plow the whole road, right?
Yes.
Because they want to get them.
I mean, we plow it, and then they have the right to go in and plow it on our roads. Basically, it's an agreement that they understand that they can plow it. We still do it, we would still plow this road here, but as we dump snow off into their access points, they understand that, you know, we'll do our piece, and then they can go in and clean it up.
Like Baytown, the Y, that's your only priority for the town.
And you have.
Right, yeah.
Clientele coming in at 5:30 in the morning.
The same standards that we've kept it on.
Just here and there, right?
No, I'm glad that you mentioned both of those, because I have written down, that's exactly what my comments were, two issues that just popped in my mind during your discussion. So thank you for doing that.
But we do have a template in place we've used before, you know, if it was agreeable with, you know, something similar, we've shared with them, you know, what that agreement looks like.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I feel much more comfortable having you guys here tonight with explanation of some of the closures.
We're not talking about one, we're not talking about. Okay, so not apples to apples. All right, I just, so, I'm just curious, I mean, what are the number of cars that presently come into the Y?
I wouldn't have the.
Depends.
It depends. We have 598 spots, so on any given day, we have about 3,000 people through. So, you know, you're probably talking, you know, during the summer, it's more because of camp, so you're probably talking 1,000 cars or, you know, give or take, depending on, you know, what that is. And then with the U of R, we did a traffic study, I think, when we did the expansion last time, so I think those numbers haven't really changed much, but those numbers were done, I think Steve Ferranti put all those together.
Probably a little more predictable than some other commercial projects and such.
We actually matched up what our high usage was, and then we said, well, when is home leasing's high usage? Well, it's senior, so it's not really, it doesn't conflict with our high usage side or anything like that. So we, that was one of the first things we asked, is when do they think they would have a lot of traffic coming in and out? And it didn't match up at all with our traffic patterns.
Well, I would suspect that when the light was put in at 250, there was some traffic study done by the state or someone else that had an indication of how many cars were turning into or out of the Y.
Right, right. So we presented, the town has it, I don't have the numbers.
So I'd be interested in knowing that. And then I'd be interested in then getting a sense of how many cars you anticipate are going to be on the Penfield Square site.
Yep.
So what the increased volume.
Sure. Yeah, Rob, what I can share with you is, we are in the process of doing a traffic study. The planning board has asked for that as part of their site plan review. It's standard undersecret to do. It's, we are using SRF, Associate Steve Ferranti also. They are in the process of doing their data collection. They have the YMCA's previous report, but they are all, they are doing updated traffic counts. So we will have a 2018 snapshot of traffic in and out of the YMCA parcel. We have shared with them the proposed uses. They'll do a trip generation, projected trip generation on that. So that will answer that second part of that comment. And all of that gets put into their study to identify, A, does the signal at 250, does it need any adjustments, signal adjustments? You know, the good part is, I've read the 2005 study, is it did anticipate development to the north in the fact of that's why that was constructed with one entrance lane and two exit lanes. So there was a lot of pre-planning and growth in there, but Steve Ferranti is verifying all that, and that will be shared with the State Department of Transportation in addition to town staff. So that'll all get vetted and verified.
Do we have a sense, Mark, what size plow would be using or going down that street? Would it be one of the main routes off of 250, or is?
Probably.
Okay.
It's a larger street than.
Let's see, we've had EPW sitz in on PRC, and we've had their input all along on, how do we plow this? How are we going to plow? We're showing on-street parking on Road B, so they've been part of the conversation is, do we have a wing? How are we going to plow it? How are we going to maintain it? So they've been part of the discussion and, you know, make sure they're comfortable with what's being proposed and what the future development is so they can properly handle that in the wintertime.
And that did also include proper turnarounds for them, because currently until develop moves.
Yeah, we've got to make sure we can turn.
They got to be able to turn the plow around.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, I'm not opposed to it becoming a dedicated road. I think that makes sense in the long term. What is the concern to me is the number of access points into the Y parking lot. It's been that way since the first time we had this conversation. I don't think three, closing three is enough. You have too many cars coming in and out of too many access points onto a town-dedicated road. Right now, the liability is on the Y. It's not a town road. If we were to dedicate it, now it's a town road. There are too many ways for too many people to be turning their heads left and right with, at the current configuration. And we talk about synergy, and I'm looking at the Penfield Square development sort of as how it's aligned with the Y. I mean, right now, you have, you know, one or two curb cuts towards the back closed by the Y, certainly the one in the front, but that has to be in order to have a throat that is, you know, allowable. But it just, I mean, you've got the first circular thing with, you've got two curb cuts coming into this one second access point of Penfield Square. It just, it's not, I think there needs to be a little more synergy in there, is how you've got some of these access points lining up with proposed roads. And right now, you've got a few that are off-kilter. You have, I mean, I was just drawing right here, I mean, I have four curb cut, or four open points and six closed, if there are 10, I don't know.
There are 10 total.
Okay, so I have four that I could justify seeing as open and the others being closed. I just cannot support a plan where you have too many, I mean, we would never consider a dedicated road going through the Wegmans parking lot, where you have, you know, you have the entry into Wegmans, and then you've got the little parking lots to the north where the employees park, and let's say we want to dedicate the, we would never consider that with 15 open access points onto a dedicated road. I can't justify looking at this any differently than something like that. And we don't plow into the Walmart parking lot. We plow Brant Road, but we're not going down into, you know, the Walmart parking lot. My major concern, not only the number of eyes and number of people, and forget speed, I mean, any ad speed in the hill and a traffic light, people trying to make that. I mean, you have a town road with the town plow, the big plow, is going to be coming down that road now when it decides it's en route. So it's going to be at all points, depending on snowfall. And you've got the town plow coming in there. If you keep the same number of open curb cuts, seven, 10, whatever it may be, you're going to have that much more chaos with cars trying to get out onto the town-dedicated road where you've got snowdrifts. Because the town plow with a wing is going to come down and push four feet, three feet, two feet of snow directly into every single one of these access points. So you can have the access, the point, the property to the north, the YMCA to the south, you can certainly be out there in your town trucks, but you can't push it into the town road. So you're going to have to find different ways to get the snow out of there, and then the town plow's going to come through as it does always, right after you finish shoveling, throws it all right back into the curb cuts. So I think more thought has to be given to the fact that you're asking the town to assume liability and responsibility for a road where you've got multiple acts, I mean, whether you have to look at a soccer field or whether you have to just eliminate parking, I mean, something has to be done. There has to be a give or take. And in my estimation, three is not enough. There has to be more if I'm going to consider supporting a dedicated road. And I know I've been a strong opponent of this from the beginning, so, you know, I appreciate the effort, I appreciate the individuals around the table for, you know, taking the time and the effort. Obviously, it's an important venture you have here for that area of town. I strongly support everything the Y is doing, I support the property, but when you start talking about town plows, the snow, the access points, the speed considerations, traffic counts, liability assumed by the town now is different than what it's currently, you know, the current access even there. So I would suggest that, I don't know how quickly that traffic study will be done, but I would suggest that, you know, we would table this, let the applicant take another swipe at this and try to come back with something that they think may be more of a compromise. I mean, that'd be my suggestion. I don't know if there's a second on that, but.
Well, this is, this is, it's not an action.
We don't have an action on it tonight, do we?
It is, it is, we don't, we don't have to take an action this evening. So certainly, one of the things that, when they first came in to us, they were looking for one, you know, would the town take dedication? And if so, what might some of those conditions be? And if not, how come? But at some point, they need a decision from us as to what direction we're going to go, so that as they're preparing their plans, home leasing is preparing before the planning board, they do need an indication. So our choices are, we could table pending additional information. You could approve this, or if the board, or there were enough votes, could deny that action. So those are the, those are the three components that are before us.
To Rob's point, I would like to hear from DPW with respect to the plowing. I know that they're part of the PRC, but I'd like specifically to hear from DPW with respect to, you know, what's being proposed. You know, a real, a real deep dive, not just to, you know, because the DPW's a great highway department, we can, we'll handle whatever you throw at us. I want something, a real, you know, constructive criticism.
Okay.
About taking this on.
Got it.
Do we have an idea when these traffic studies are going to be completed by SRF?
I would suspect, Linda, it would be the first week or two of August.
Well, that's pretty good. I mean, that's one thing, maybe that would be helpful, too, to get the numbers to what Rob was speaking to.
Sure.
Had that in hand to add to your question, your explanation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to this plan. I'm not opposed to the dedication. The one point that I think Rob does make, and Peter and Kevin, again, I'm just going to go back to the plowing element of it, is the coordination of, you know, a town plow going down the road, pushing that snow into the curb cuts. You know, we all see that on driveways, things like that. It's just, it happens everywhere in the country that plow snow, you know? And then how does that get cleared out from those curb cuts? And, you know, you might have a contractor from the YMCA go through, kind of clean it out, and then 45 minutes later, the town goes through and clogs it back up again. And so, again, I'm not opposed to this at all. I just think that you really need to have some good coordination to make sure that those type of issues, you know, get worked out.
So one of the things that we talked about when we're at the PRC is if you notice, at the end of that road, there's actually that turnaround circle.
Right.
So what we talked about is the plows being able to, if need to, they can actually use that turnaround, plow in and come out. But also for our snowplow, that's how when we clear, we push out into the roadway, and then we have, our pusher comes down. So unlike the, or like the town plow, it comes down about every four or five hours, depending on snowfall. So we have a big, that again, with the traffic there pushes everything down. Subsequently to that, we have additional machinery on hand, whether it's, you know, ATVs or snowplows that then pushes everything around to keep that, to keep that going.
Okay.
So we're not pushing snow between each other's.
Right, so we've looked at that, we looked at that turnaround and pushing it both out and down.
We're not moving the same snow back and forth.
Same snow, right, just back and forth.
And that was during that conversation, that's when they had mentioned the snowplow agreement that Mark had shared with us.
One of the things I think is interesting about the traffic content, comment is, you know, the Y is going to largely stay the same. Our use is substantially different than the Wickham property, which has a great amount of seasonality. But given our use, our peaks will be nowhere near the Wickham peaks of the Y season, right? Our uses just aren't going to generate pumpkin season and, you know, the fall festivals and all that sort of work. So that, you know, kind of extreme use when both are really going substantially, that I think will actually get mitigated by our use.
And actually, what we'll do, that's actually an excellent point, Brett, we'll have the traffic engineers address that, because they'll have the data from the 2005 study of what Wickham was doing. And we'll be able to compare that to what we project. And so we'll be able, because I do, Brett's exactly right, is the peak hours or their peak use hours are definitely offset, but I even think the demand will be less. Just the best relationship I could give you, you know, currently apartments by your code require, you know, two spaces per unit parking. The demand in home leasing has.
12 communities like this.
12 communities like this. They know their demand is .7 space per unit. You know, just not every resident has a car, and definitely not every resident has two people in there with their own cars.
And we have residents that don't use their car for two weeks.
Yes, you know, and then the other component is the Episcopal senior life here, this is an assisted living wing, and this is a memory care wing.
They're not going to have cars.
Exactly. So, so really what we, really the traffic generator out there is going to be the plus or minus 35,000 square feet of non-residential space.
And staffing.
And then staffing accordingly. And we'll provide all of that data and identify that, because I think what we're walking away from here is I think we've got some very clear questions and directions for us to address that we can put.
Peter, I might just, I'm not optimistic that we can reduce the number of road cuts on the Y. I'm not optimistic.
I understand.
I'm very doubtful that will happen. So it's sort of a deal breaker. The alternative would be to not dedicate the road. So, as a primer, I can tell you, an east-west road is much more desirable than a north-south road, so.
Yes, very true.
So as we came to the conversation, that ideally for the Y, the dedication is one, is then it helps with the development there. But once we grant the easement that the town has, that road from Atlantic, wherever it come down to there, the Y then owns the ability to license use down there for that road. So as developers were to move in and develop down the road, it would be up to the Y and the developer to make some type of agreement as to what it would cost for them to do that. That's not our business. We're not a developer. We don't want to get into that. But again, I think as Nelson said, you know, it doesn't need to be dedicated. We're just saying, if it's not dedicated, then the options that we have with the easement. saying, if it's not dedicated, then the option that we have with the easement is then to charge every user down the line a license fee.
Eventually, it would have to be dedicated, you couldn't do that, I mean...
You get 20 different developers, we have 20 different agreements, you know, yearly agreements with each of them and back and forth, so, you know, that, that's not what we want to get into.
We, you know, I think we've talked about this a little bit, but we've worked hard to kind of balance existing conditions and existing agreements, the vision that the town has with the MUD to eventually connect, which clearly everybody can imagine, once it connects, you want it dedicated, right? And our, our needs, so we need to make sure we don't impact you too much. We want to make sure that we propel the MUD forward according to the vision that it has.
Right, I just...
We can't imagine a use, excuse me, that would have less of the traffic demand.
And us.
I understand that, and it's, I'm not necessarily laying everything on the traffic, I'm talking about the general safety of the area. And, you know, when the original Y was put in, I mean, that was before the mixed-use plan was put together, that was, I mean, we're talking years. Vision's changed, the town's vision for this area has changed. So it's great that the Y is there, I'd appreciate the Y taking a deeper look at being part of the vision as opposed to saying, no, we need, we need every single spot, this is exactly what we need, this is what we have, so no, we're not going to work with anyone else points north. I mean, I understand you don't want to be a landlord to the parking, to the road, but I also don't want the town in 20 years to look back and say, how the heck did we take dedication of a road where there's 45 different easements? I mean, that's just, it's unreasonable, I think. So I, I just, like I said, I mean, and if we can't come to an agreement, or, I mean, we can't come to an agreement, then I guess we can't come to an agreement, but...
Still don't.
Okay, so a couple of, a couple of items that I captured was traffic study, the information on the snowplowing from DPW that Councilwoman Metzler had asked for. And I think Mr. Leinaut said, indicated that no further curb cuts could be reduced on the Y site. I didn't hear that specifically from the Y.
We, we've, since January, we've been going back and forth, the impact in parking is just detrimental to us and what our future site plans are as to, you know, what, you know, 13 years ago, we put infrastructure, there's everything in there to do it, so to move parking onto something like that is just a, a huge issue for us.
Closing three was actually a very dramatic gesture.
Well, you know, all points can be argued.
Yes.
So we'll end on that, we'll end on that note, so we don't get into a tit-for-tat here.
Sure.
So it sounds like there is a potential motion on the table to continue this as a held matter before this board, and I'm guessing that Councilwoman Metzler will second that. And then I would just ask board any additional items that you would like to see either from staff or from the applicant.
No, I'm fine.
And staff, anything additional that you heard or didn't hear tonight that you believe should be added to the record?
Paula asked for information from DPW to give her, to give you, as far as reports to how they were.
Yep, I did mention that, so we did that, so. So we'll, we have a motion in a second, see no further discussion of those. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that'll be held. And then would ask that, that you stay connected, maybe with staff, Peter?
Yes.
When you're ready to come back with that traffic study?
Yeah.
I think it would probably be good, we could take a look at that ahead of time and then come back and then answer any questions. In the meantime, we'll, we'll time that with the DPW component as well, so that we try to condense the meetings into one.
Right, and the other benefit we'll have is we'll have the input from the planning board also.
Okay.
We'll have the benefit of that also.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Tony, thank you, I appreciate, appreciate your time. Okay, we will shift gears, we'll move into action items. The first action item is Howitt. There has been a letter withdrawal for the rezoning component request at 41 Woodhaven Drive, and I would ask Mr. Castella, any additional, any additional comments, inputs or information for the board at this time?
Thank you, Tony. Yes, I did receive a letter just last week from Dr. Howitt requesting that his application be withdrawn regarding the rezoning of the land he's proposing, he was proposing to develop the apartment on. Attorney had asked me also to contact Mrs. Vella, along with her attorney Nancy Briley. I did get a chance to do that yesterday, and Nancy Briley did indicate that she will be sending us a letter as well, withdrawing their application for rezoning, so I guess we can kind of hold that pending until we get that, but generally speaking, you will expect to get that letter and receive it.
But it's continuing with the planning board for the upper end of the residential building?
I believe it's intended to continue to get to 30 years.
To my understanding, yes, they're working, there's some additional items the planning board needs to complete their review, with my indications that they are beginning to work on those items and would continue with the townhouse portion, but I'll say, under current zoning.
Yeah, because the public information meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago is strictly about the apartment building.
It was about the rezoning.
Correct, the rezoning. And that's what's being withdrawn.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have to take any action to accept that letter, or is it...
I would, I would encourage the board that we would vote to accept the letter withdrawal from the applicant. At this point, I would also then encourage the board that we'll wait until the next work session. I believe that both of these were contingent upon, the two rezonings came in together, and I think contingent upon one another. And I might suggest that we'll give the applicant, Ms. Vella, the opportunity to submit that withdrawal, we'll put that on the agenda in two weeks. If, if it doesn't come in, then I think we put it on the agenda as an action item and then take the appropriate action. So, for tonight, I would, would ask for a motion to accept the withdrawal of the rezoning at Woodhaven from...
Second.
Moved and seconded, further, further discussions, see none, we will just confirm acceptance by the board in that the board voted to have this matter withdrawn. Okay, great, thank you. We'll move on to the second action item, that Starbucks relocation at 1798 Pennfield Road. Again, Mr. Castella, an update on that matter.
Thank you. Yes, last Friday afternoon, I received an email from Luis Ribeiro requesting that we please remove the Starbucks application from the town board agenda. At this time, we won't longer be moving forward to that site, so I'd again ask that you accept that, that withdrawal.
Okay, and I think, I was just going to say that...
I'll second.
What I, what I was going to say, what I was going to say is, is that, you know, that we had given Starbucks and the property owner a number of opportunities for discussion before this board. They, they elected either because they couldn't make it work or couldn't on that particular site make it work, so withdrawn that I think was probably, you know, in the best interest of all parties associated with that.
I agree.
So, all right, so it's been moved by Councilwoman Metzler, seconded by Councilman Quinn. Further discussion, see none. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that matter will be taken care of, and again, we'll confirm back that it's withdrawn. Okay, we'll move on to item C, this is the Wynn special permit for 2567 Brown Croft Boulevard. Mr. Castell, this is Wynn, you're welcome to join us at the table.
So we had our public hearing for the special permit to allow a historic preservation site to be utilized for something other than a single-family residence on June 6th, and we tabled that matter pending input to review proposal in more detail to give the board more information. Mary has submitted renderings both to this board and to the historic preservation board who meets tomorrow evening, but again, I don't think anything will happen tomorrow evening other than just an update as to where this board is with that application. She, as you remember, she's proposing 12 units. She actually, it was a plot ordinance or something that has to be done in our ordinance, because the ordinance requires applicants to appear before the planning board for review prior to going to the town board for the special permit. I think we have to look at that as an option to be modified in some way, but she did appear before the planning board for 12 units, as she was required by buyer town code to have covered parking to accommodate anybody coming to the site. So she went for the 12 units, she did receive approval for 12 units, but is subject to the town board making a decision as to the appropriate number of units for the site, and the design of those units will be subject to the town board and, and the historic preservation board's review. So she's kind of at limbo right now, depending upon what action you take regarding this, and it's all on hold until you make a decision one way or the other.
Understand, understand. Okay, so the board did, did hear this application, we also heard from a number of residents as well on this. I think some of the concerns that, that the board has had discussions on is the, the number of units at that, at that site. And the board would be interested in hearing a little bit more detail about what other options, if any, that you may have looked at as far as the less number of units at that particular location.
Well, the house is over 5,000 square feet, which does not include the White House. So the White, so if you look at that, that would make it 11 units in the main house, which would give it about 450 square feet per apartment, which is about 80 square feet more than the IKEA, the ideal IKEA, one-bedroom apartment is 388 square feet. In fact, I've purchased an entire floor plan, I've purchased every single item in an IKEA apartment is a floor plan, you know, a floor model. So I based my size on the perfect layout for a one-bedroom apartment. And I didn't consider larger units because my market is a furnished unit, so I don't want people bringing furniture in and out. I don't want any damage to the building. I've, it's over $50,000 to restore the windows. I don't want anyone damaging anything in the building. And my candidate is a professional, a single professional, who's either relocating to the area, looking for a home, waiting for their family to come when they bought a house, or someone who's working here temporarily and has a family in another city. So I based the entire floor plan on that client and that use.
So, so let me, let me ask the question again. The, previously, the facility was used, the house was used as a two-family most recently. Did you consider anything less than 12? And so I guess I'll, I'll be a little bit more direct. I think this board is looking at something not quite as extensive as that many units, and that more in keeping with, with the neighborhood.
I would, I would be interested to know what the concern is, because you won't be able to see anybody from the outside, and there are enough exterior entrances. So I, I would be interested to know what the concern is that this would not work as planned.
So, so I think the concern, some of the concern is, is the fact that it is, for the most part, residential, single-family residential neighborhood, and you're proposing 12 individual units of folks that could be coming and going all hours of day and night. So not only vehicles, but individuals, and then there is quite a bit of garage area that, you know, is being proposed that will impact that site, that is significantly different than what that site is today. Granted, there are some garages there, I know that you're going to be utilizing some of that space for that, but again, the board, I believe, and the board will certainly have an opportunity to speak for themselves, the board, you know, is interested in knowing what other options or considerations were given other than just taking the facility as it is and write to 12 individual units.
Yeah, I, I, I took the floor plan because Chris Hurley, whose father is now protecting him, he had the floor plan. I took the floor plan and I worked with him on spacing, separating it with the existing doors and walls where they were, and it broke up into this size. So if I had to change that, then they would be larger units, and you'd have, you'd still have the same number of bedrooms, you'd have the same number of people living in the house. And if my candidate, well, it could, I mean, then you could get a situation where maybe it's an adult relocating and they're bringing a child, or, so then there'd be children in school buses. I based it on the, the floor plan that, that existed, so I separated it physically based on the floor plan that was there. And that's how we got to the size. It's not like I said, oh, I need, I mean, I can only do 12 to make this work financially, because it's really 11 in the house. So I, I, I would, I could change that, but the bedroom numbers would be the same.
So, so I think it's safe to say that you, the building, essentially two-family, and what you looked at or what you were looking to do is 12, and you're not really looking to make much change or any consideration, any, any different than that, anything less than that?
It was a three-family, and as a two-family, there was an incredible strange, strangeness of use of space, is all I can say. There was just this incredible strangeness of use of space. The back part of the house, which was the original, because the house was built in three sections, so the original part of the house, to me, was a fire trap, the way it was built with the, the staircase in the middle, and it just was a very strange use of space, because you had one apartment in the back house, it's first and second floor, very peculiar where the bathroom was. And then Chris and his family took the rest, and they had like three living rooms, they had this tiny dining room. The kitchen was in the White House, and it was very strange, it was a very strange use of space to be a two-family. Like it would have been better to be a four-family or a five-family the way it was, but the use of space is just really inefficient, and I think that led to their, it wasn't a successful home for a family to live in. And you walked through one bedroom to the other to get to the bathroom, it just was not hospitable in, you know, for a family to enjoy their privacy and their space the way it was laid, because you'd walk, you'd walk through rooms, there were like four rooms together, and then there's the bathroom. And I, I came to the arrangement specifically because of the way the rooms were laid out and where the entrances were, that it just made sense to like make these sized apartments. I mean, if you feel it's too many, I, I could look at it again, it just, it just physically lends itself so beautifully to the application because of the, the way the rooms are. And at one time, it, it has 20 rooms in it, so it, it had 20 rooms when it was built, not including the White House.
I'll, I'll offer that, as I often do, we have to be mindful as a board of what our duty is here, what findings we have to make, and what, what area of the law you're making your application under.
Right.
Which is town law 274B for a special use permit. It's clear in the law that although we had certainly a lot of residents speak up, and their input is very important, we cannot deny this by solely on community objection. That's, we are, we have to have other findings that are made to deny your request. I think what I'm hearing here, though, is you're talking a lot about the interior of the building, which actually is irrelevant target of the application. We have to make a determination... We have to make a determination that your permitted use is basically in harmony with the area's zoning plan and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. And I don't see a showing being made here of that, that there is, that this is a harmonious use externally or internally, really, the use is what we focus on, not so much the aesthetics and the style. And I just think that as a board, we have to be mindful, at least I can speak for myself, that mindful that there's no hardship that's been set forth here that could be an exception. There's been no showing that this is the only use that can be successful. And those are the types of findings that we as a board have to make. I'm very mindful, and I appreciate all the residents that came forward, and that certainly is a big, big chunk of what we do, but we also have to know that, and I like to inform residents, that that's not the only thing that we can hang our hat on when we're either granting or denying, denying a request for a special use permit. So I think, I concur with Supervisor LaFontaine that I think, and I certainly had you experienced you coming into the historic preservation board a lot, and a lot of the efforts that you've put forward from a historic preservation standpoint, and those are all to be commended. But I think that we have to be mindful that the burden that is on the applicant here, I don't think has been met to show that this is harmonious with the current zoning plan on any side of the property or in that area of town. There's nothing in the comprehensive plan that would make this harmonious from a land use perspective, and that therefore it would then adversely affect the character of the neighborhood.
So the house is over 5,000 square feet, not including the White House. And a typical two-bedroom runs between 800 and 1,000 square feet. I guess my question is, is someone told me that we needed to have garages. Now, I know that apartment complexes don't have to have garages. I don't know why we needed to have garages, which...
They do, actually, but in some cases, they've been granted variances for a certain amount or none, depending on what the situation is. Most of them do have them, some of them are underground, actually. That's why you don't see them. But we do have them in some cases, some cases we don't.
Okay. So, because it sounds like the garages are of a concern, because they're going to change the visual. You know, the house has to be able to support itself. And it has been granted as a historic landmark. It is expensive to manage it, you know, there's a lot of cost still involved in restoring it. I guess the question would be, what do you think is, certainly, we couldn't have it be a three-family, it's too big. It's just, it wouldn't be able to support itself as a three-family. The rent could not support the building.
Well, look, and Mary, I mean, I drive past this house twice a day, Monday through Friday, and I see you doing a lot of work on the house, absolutely. Nobody can deny that. And I appreciate the fact that you want to restore the historic nature of it and the era of it. But, you know, there is a part of me that goes to the simple fact that the property was purchased with zoning in place. It wasn't purchased with zoning allowing, or a special use permit allowing 12 apartments to be put into the building. That's your choice as the owner. And so, I mean, I look at this from a perspective that, in a sense, it is creating an apartment building, a 12-unit apartment building. Forget about, you know, your desire to have an upscale clientele, and I appreciate that. I mean, I think that's admirable in what you're doing to the house. But it wasn't sold to you as a special use permit given on this property for 12 units. You're asking for, you're asking this board to give you special consideration, which puts us in a position of saying yes, or puts us in a position of saying no, or puts us in a position of trying to compromise to something that may be more suitable to the surrounding, to the community, to the neighborhood, or more acceptable to its current zone status versus a big leap to a 12-unit building. And so, you know, you've been talking about rents, you've been talking about square footage, and I understand that from a financial perspective, but you, I can't run away from the fact that you're trying to get this board to give you a special use permit for 12 units. And what I'm hearing from Councilwoman Metzler and from the supervisor, and I feel the same way, although I'm not going to get into the legal elements of it, is that 12 units is too much for me. And, you know, I'd like to see it much more scaled down to something that's more complementary to the neighborhood. And that may not be financially in your best interest to do that from a profit-making perspective. And I'm not trying to be critical of that.
No, I'm not feeling criticized by you.
But you bought the property knowing what the current conditions of it were. You want to try to make it something different, which requires this town board's approval to grant a special use permit. Right now, I am not voting in favor, if we're going to be voting tonight, in favor of allowing the 12 units to move forward.
What would be a number that would be acceptable?
Well, typically, this board, you know, doesn't get into the layout and planning. I mean, there's an element of that that the applicant needs to go back and kind of look at and reassess. What I'll say to you, what I'm hearing from the board is, is that 12 is not the right number.
Is there a way to find out what the right number would be so that when I make another application, it would be acceptable?
So you have not, so you have not shown us any other alternatives other than the 12 units.
Okay.
And what I might encourage, and I think you had indicated, is that, you know, you would go back and take a look at, or reassess, you know, what maybe some of those other elements are. And then I would invite you back to a work session, and we would look to have further conversation about next steps.
And you would not have to make another application, it's just continuing.
Correct. This is, so, the only, the only way that I would ask for another hearing is, is if you were going the other way and proposing, I'm doubling the units, I'm going from 12 to 24.
Yeah, we don't be asking.
Or 13, or, yes, 13, or even one more. But the board would look to have further dialogue with an alternate plan or plans that might be something less than. And I don't think anybody is going to, you know, sit here tonight to say the right number is one, or five, or what have you. I think the burden really is back on you to go back and take a look at that. I mean, if you'd like us to rule tonight, which I don't think you do, which I don't think you do.
Right, right, I'll work with you.
You know, what I'm hearing is it would be a denial. And so I think the thing from this board, and what you're hearing from this board, is that to go back and to take a look at what some of those alternatives might be, and then bring it back to the board for discussion at this work session.
Okay.
And I just would add that, you know, I agree with what Paula said, and I agree with what Andy said, and so besides the harmonious part of the neighborhood, I would just say that, you know, we heard from many residents, I do empathize with residents, certainly with the standpoint that they purchased their home in a residential property, and sort of the neighboring property now is, look to be changing. And, you know, it's certainly something we've been looking at here in the town over the last year, but I do empathize with the residents who are now sort of looking at this going, well, wait a minute, this is going to seriously impact either my house directly, or it's going to impact my neighborhood. So I certainly agree with the findings of the harmonious aspect of it. I certainly believe in the buyer beware aspect that Andy was mentioning, but I do, I do take stock, maybe a little bit more in the empathy for the neighbors than the legal findings. But I just wanted to, you know, wherever, whatever the, you know, Plan B may be, you know, I'm certainly looking forward to reviewing that, but, you know, I think some consideration certainly needs to be given to the neighbors and their comments from the public hearing regarding, you know, the visual appearance of whether garages or cars, the grounds, the individuals walking on the grounds at all hours, coming back and forth, whether you have tables, fire pits, whatever it may be.
There's not going to be tables or fire pits.
So, and fence, I mean, I see a fence in the picture, was there a fence?
Yeah, we were going to extend the same fence that we have on our home. See, I think that the thing that I'm a little confused about, because this face, faces, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but this house is on Brown Croft Boulevard. So any neighbor who lives behind us, even a neighbor who might have taken their fence down, who, I'm not sure why someone would do that after I buy the property, but we would put a fence up, the same as we have on our home. And you can't see the neighbor when the fence is up. It's the neighbor's backyard that backs up to our backyard. So I'm one neighbor, and the other neighbor is what is going to be a residential group home, and probably doesn't have to come for a permit. So that will have a lot of traffic and a lot of people walking day and night because it will be rehab center. It's not, you know, that's not necessarily...
No, that's not.
But the thing is, is that's my neighbor. So my neighbor is me and the other neighbor, across the street is a church, to the left at that one is a church. So those are the neighbors to this home. Any neighbors behind this home is a backyard, and we will put a fence up, and then we'll put arboretis on the other side of the, on our side of the fence that will grow, and it will be very private. So I understand people get nervous and scared, and they want to be safe, and they want to be protected. But regardless if we make it a five-family, if we make it, whatever size we make it, we're still going to do the same things, because I still want the privacy. I want the privacy. I don't know what's going to happen behind the house. I want to protect the house. I want the privacy of the house.
And as a property owner, you know, fences are permitted in our...
They make good neighbors. Fences make good neighbors. So we just haven't put the fence up yet. But certainly, I would love to come to a work session, the next work session, and work with you, and find something that's acceptable. But I do want to make sure that the neighbors are on Brown Croft.
I would say that you don't decide who your neighbors are when we're talking about what we're looking at as a community. We will decide what the effect of neighborhood is. And I would, I would submit that that includes anyone in your vicinity. That's what, that's what I was talking about earlier. Harmonious does not, you know, draw a line in your backyard.
200 feet or something.
Correct. But I certainly, I will say, though, I mean, I, as I mentioned, I've observed in the historic preservation board all your efforts, and I think that there is a place for this type of concept. I mean, I certainly could buy into this concept, but it's, it's an example, at least at this juncture, where we've seen this before, it's not unique, and it's not, you know, singling you out, where we say, you know, this is, sounds like a great concept, just not here. And that's where I think we're, we're not saying scrap everything completely, but I think there certainly is obviously room for improvement of this property, and it looks as if it's not conducive to be a single-family home, but it's not conducive for a 12-unit apartment property either.
Okay. All right. I would ask staff, any additional comments that you believe should be added to the record that we have not talked about this evening at this point?
No, I think you've covered them. I think that it's a matter, as you said earlier, giving her the opportunity to go back and look at the interior of the building to determine what could be less than 12, if that's the issue, and make it work properly.
Though I'm hearing, though, that the interior has nothing to do with it.
No, in terms of our findings, in terms of the permitted use, you know, when you're talking about the style and all the, and square footage, that, to me, is not dispositive. It was really the 12 unit.
Well, it's still a house. It's a house in a residential district that would all of a sudden become something other than a house. So by doing that, you're creating something that's not...
Well, I'm thinking more in terms of the internal area being workable, so that you don't have people tripping over each other, going through one bedroom to another, or something like that. It's got to be, it's got to be something that works properly, so there's people that have separate and distinct living areas, and it's less than 12, if it's five or six.
I mean, there have been historical homes, phenomenal historical homes that have been, that have been, you know, reconfigured to be three townhomes, you know, within one. I mean, there's, there's a lot that's been done with historical homes.
This, this specific historical home, that would not be possible because of the, because of the way the floor, floor joists run, because of where the staircases are. So, but...
What about places, even where you live, I mean, places that have office space and have a photographer studio down below.
So are you suggesting it could become commercial?
Well, no, but it'd be almost like, there's opportunities out there for...
Well, when you say commercial, though, we have in the past, you said photography studio, we did do that on Penfield Road. We did have a small accounting agency.
Yeah, doesn't necessarily mean you need a zone commercial.
That's right. And I think that's what...
Or home use.
That's what...
Home use applications. Yeah, but I think that that would be very difficult to assure that I would always be able to find someone who would want to live there and also run a business there. That would be a very narrow scope, and also to be sure that that person would be successful. Because now I'm renting to someone who has to have a home business. And again, I have to be able to support the building. And I don't want to pigeonhole myself and say only someone who can have a home business.
Right.
You know, I think that's...
I'm just throwing out good houses, I say.
Yeah, I think we should stay away from trying to steer the applicant towards what you do or whatnot. If you like, I mean, I think we've been pretty clear.
There are opportunities out there, though.
Well, in fairness, in fairness to the applicant, when she first came to me, that was...
I'm not advocating some...
The intent was to look at using that property as a, some kind of a business. And she actually made an effort to contact neighbors to see if they'd be willing to request rezoning down the street, because she knew that spot zoning would not be permitted.
Right.
I tried to take her away from that, because I knew that we could not put any type of business in there at the time, it was not an historic site. So as I've said, in the past, we've had businesses in historic sites that are harmonious to the neighbors around them.
Right.
The current town was to try and stay away from the business aspect, but stay into a residential setting, and that's kind of how this whole thing kind of evolved, was to get more than one or two units in a two-family that was at one time a three-family that wasn't that.
Yeah, it would always be somebody special that would want to do something like that, that could put the money into a house and then want to live in it and work in it.
It is kind of a business. I mean, because it's furnished, my intent was to have it furnished, that is in itself a business. But it's a business to have residences, not, you know, like a photography studio or, I'm not, you know, a culinary, you know.
A normal business, okay. All right. So we're going to, I'll look for a motion to continue to hold this matter, have it a held matter on this work session agenda, and give the applicant an opportunity to go back and have some further reviews and looks at the property as to what, what might be changed from what is being proposed, which is the 12 unit.
Moved.
Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Moore, and seconded by Linda. I would, I would say, as soon as you're ready to come in with anything additional, if you would work with Mr. Costello, we would put you on, you know, that next available work session. Our work sessions are the second and the fourth Wednesdays of each month.
What is the ruling for, when do you not have to have garage covered? Covered? How many units?
You do have to have them for multiple use. You do not have to have one for a single family if you were just...
But it was, it was a three-family, and it was...
It's a pre-existing non-conforming condition to our current ordinance. The ordinance was put in place in 1962, and then revised in 1981, so obviously it was 100 years...
So when the house, yeah, when the house was built, you know, there was not a zoning ordinance in place at the time.
So if, what if I just took it back to, is it inappropriate for me to ask that question? If I took it back to a three-family, it was a three-family, and then Chris and Tubal made it a two-family, because they didn't want, I'm not sure what the reason, but to take it back to a three-family or a four-family...
I think, I think certainly the board will be willing to take a look at any thoughts and ideas that you might, that you might have. I think, you know, again, the message being that 12, 12 is too much.
So, you could go in the right direction.
And so, back, and then we'll, and then, again, we'll have it on the work session agenda. And then whatever decision that the board ultimately makes, we're going to have to do a resolution at a, one of our legislative sessions.
Okay.
So.
Great.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye. Okay. Opposed? All right. So, I'm going to, I'm going to, we're going to move, we're going to move on. We've got the next, the next item is preservation of curb cut parking requirement relief at 2136 Penfield Road. Essentially, this, if you recall, this has been a held matter. Mr. Costello and I elected to bring it up to an action item, and let Mr. Costello explain why that is an action item.
Thank you, Tony. As you recall, this is, we're on the east side of Harris Wayland Park Drive to the park. At the time that that property was rezoned, some of you were on the board. Actually, I think all of you were on the board, now that I think about it. One of the conditions that you required was...
West side.
East side.
I wasn't around on the east side.
Okay. Yes, right. You're the one. In any event, east side required that at the time, that the seven units that were rezoned, that the last one that was converted to some type of commercial use, from residential to commercial, that a roadway would have to be constructed throughout the backs of those properties to tie into Harris Wayland Park Drive, to get access to the signalization at that intersection. Over the years, it started out with the Federal Credit Union, and then you had eyesight come in recently, and then most recently, you also had the Uvar Urgent Care Center, which left two properties.
Yeah.
And the two properties were, one was a single fam, well, actually, neither one was a single-family residence most recently. One is a psychiatrist's office, the other one, which is immediately adjacent to Uvar. The other one is a manufacturer's rep office, which has recently been sold to eyesight. During this period of time, the reason why we put this on the agenda months ago was because we were looking at the opportunity of having the town go in and finishing this up, so that was, you know, for public safety. Since that time, we've learned that eyesight has just recently purchased the manufacturer's rep site. Their intent is to go in and put a parking lot in the back of the house and continue the roadway by the end of this year. That leaves the one house left. We're not going to go in for one person to build a driveway for them. Eyesight has indicated that they will work with that individual to get a price that's, you know, acceptable to him, to get the work done at the time that they do their property. So, Tony and I feel that it's probably at a point timed out when we have this dismissed off the agenda to allow them to finalize what they need to do.
If they're willing to pay for it.
Well, and they were always going to pay for it. The town wasn't going to go in and just do it at, you know, at the town's expense. They were going to, they were going to pay for it, reimburse us for the work. But it turns out that they're going to work with the contractor now and the owner of the property next door to get that done. So, I request that you just formally dismiss it from the agenda.
And we definitely know that the guy, the one who held out is going to be amiable to...
Well, he knows he has to do it. He's already been aware of that for several years now, and I've talked to him, you know, when the Uvar was going in, we talked about doing it at that point in time, but he knows it has to be done. So.
And he knows he's on the hook for that.
And then remind me, again, what happens to the curb cuts on 441 Central Road?
That was not the same situation that you required. I think that they're going to, some of them are going to stay in place.
I mean, we've been minimizing them, and then potentially could eliminate them when those redevelop. Eyesight has no connection, nor does the urgent care facility. Both come off the back. You know, I could see those two buildings flipping or, you know, redeveloping from their houses used as businesses as they redevelop. You know, the intent, our intent would be to push them to move the building forward and then reutilize the back access only, so.
Fix it alike.
I think it'd only be to their benefit to now have an access to a traffic light, you know, across from Weygand and Harris Wayland, so I think that'd be a benefit to...
I'll move to dismiss this from the agenda until further... I'll second you for this.
Right, okay. Moved and seconded. That matter will be dropped. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? All right. We have no informational items. This will wrap up the July 11, 2018 work session agenda, and we'll stand adjourned at 8:37 PM.
Very good.